Hey folks, this is Andy. I have just another minute or a little less than a minute to seven, so I'll start recording and broadcasting that if that's all right.
Thanks very much, Andy. This is Rob Champetti, Chair of Zoning Board of Appeals. It is now seven o'clock and I will go ahead and call to order the agenda for the Newbury Report, City of Newbury Report Zoning Board of Appeals for the meeting of July 28, 2020. Basically, what I'll do is take a moment and just introduce the board members. We'll go through a roll call and as we do with any Zoom meeting, because we can't be live and in person, normally we, you know, we have kind of folks when it's time to speak, raise your hand to indicate that they wish to speak, but in a few moments, I'll just walk through the format and the flow of the meetings so that everyone's aware of how we'll conduct a Zoom meeting to the extent to which you haven't been party to one of these meetings before. Starting with with our meeting agenda, all of this information is available online. So if you go to the City of Newbury Report website and then click on to Zoning Board of Appeals, you will have access to seeing not only the agenda, but also clicking to the PDF summary under each agenda item that's listed. So you'll have access to not only previous minutes, previous recordings of meetings, as well as the agenda item, which is organized by address. And so every member of the of the public that might be logged on, as well as members of the board, have access to that, but also our planning director, Andy Port, will be putting this up for everyone to see on the Zoom conference itself. So this way it's it's easy. So anything that's being spoken of, just let our planning director, Andy Port, know and he'll pull up that slide if it isn't already. So having opened the meeting, we will go through a quick roll call and an introduction to the board. We have this evening, Mr. Mark Moore, who's our Vice Chair, Stephen Delisle, who's the Secretary, Ms. Rachel Webb, a member, Mr. Ken Swanson, pardon me, member, and Walter Bud Shannon, Associate Member. My name is Rob Champetti, I'm the Chairman, and also in attendance this evening is Mr. Andy Port, our Planning Director, Caitlin Sullivan, our City Planner, and our tireless keeper of the minutes, Ms. Gretchen Joy. And it looks, if anyone is watching, you can you can click on and see who's speaking to the right of your screen by just clicking Participants. There are panelists who are the members of the board, the Planning Director, myself and Caitlin Sullivan, and then attendees, which would be anyone else who's logged on by name or by number. So now moving to the roll call, if I can just call the roll and ask each member to voice their attendance by saying here or present or I. Mark Moore.
Here.
Mr. Stephen Delisle.
Here.
Rachel Webb. We'll put a pause on Rachel, she'll be, I'm sure she'll be logging on shortly. Ken Swanton.
Here, and I saw Rachel under the attendees list, so hopefully she'll join soon.
Let's see. I see Rachel now. Rachel, can you, can you hear us?
Sorry, yes, I'm here.
Okay, Rachel Webb is here and Bud Shannon.
Yes, here.
Okay, everyone is in attendance, that's six members. We, the five voting members this evening will be myself, Mark Moore, Stephen Delisle, Rachel Webb, and Ken Swanton. And Bud Shannon will, as an Associate Member, will be stepping in should anyone need to recuse themselves or have to recuse themselves on future hearings. So we'll move through the agenda. Our business meeting will begin with approval of the minutes. We'll then have a quick, just sort of outline of staff level review of minor modifications process and that pertains to 20 Union Street. And then we'll get into our public hearings. And before we do that, I'll just, for those that are in attendance, I'll just walk through a quick overview of how these meetings are conducted and the flow, and then we will jump right in. Our goal is to try to be as efficient as possible, but to give everyone an opportunity, especially with this format and technology, to to raise their hand and voice their opinion, no matter what side of the fence they may find themselves on. Okay, so the business meeting, we have the minutes of 7:14, 2020 before the board. Do we have any changes or modifications, or do any of the members of the board have any questions? Hearing nothing, I will, I'm sorry, was, is there anyone that had any comments or questions on the minutes? Pardon me.
Yeah, sorry, this is Mr. Delisle, I had two changes on the minute. Under the public hearing for Ryan McShara, the third sentence in the first paragraph says, "The new structure will be more 10 feet from the side lot." I think it should be more than 10 feet from the side lot.
Okay.
And then, secondly, in the third to last paragraph on page three, the first sentence reads, "Mr. Delisle said the application is technically," and it says "infirm." I think it should be "infirmed ED," the past tense. And those are my only comments.
Okay. All right. Any other, any other comments or revisions or questions on the on the minutes? Seeing no hands and hearing no voices, I will ask the board for a motion to approve the minutes of 7:14.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July 14.
I'll second it, Ken Swanton.
Okay, motion's made by by Ms. Webb and seconded by Mr. Swanton. And I'll call the roll, you can just voice your assent by saying aye. Mark Moore.
Aye.
Stephen Delisle.
Aye.
Rachel Webb.
Aye.
Ken Swanton.
Aye.
Bud Shannon.
Aye.
Rob Champetti, I vote aye, that's six in the affirmative, the motion carries, the minutes are adopted. Moving to the, and thank you. The moving to the next item in the business meeting, we have a note here for 20 Union Street. Essentially, what it really denotes is just a reminder for me to sort of describe for the board what the what the office process is, our planning office, when it comes into into receipt of a request for, you know, a modification of any kind. It, the first sort of gatekeeping mechanism will be our zoning commissioner, Ms. Blanchett, will review this in cooperation with with our Planning Director, Andy Port, as well as as well as Caitlin Sullivan, our City Planner, to determine whether the criteria being requested in modification rises to the level of being a minor modification or something perfunctory enough where the where the office can can make a staff level rendering on it so as to be, I guess, administratively efficient. If it is on the line, of course, or if it is tripping the line, or if they're unsure, they'll err on the side of caution and the staff will will bump it to us as members of the ZBA to to have a hearing and to to sort of vet the contemplated changes. In this instance, their their perception of 20 Union Street is it falls well below what I believe Ms. Blanchett's threshold was in company with Mr. Port and and Ms. Sullivan on being a minor modification. So their determination, their inclination was to simply handle it as a staff level review. And I think that's kind of what we've done in the past, that's that's been an effective method. We, I think, as a board, benefit by this being the continued method, but I just wanted to put that out there and see if any members of the board have any any comments on that or want to or wish to add anything to to kind of that that program. Hearing, seeing no, seeing no hands and hearing no, no comments. Since this is an application by Attorney Lisa Mead, Attorney Mead, do you wish to be heard at all? Or are you content with us just proceeding through the this part of the meeting?
I'm content, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Attorney Mead. Okay, so moving now to the public hearings. So we have several public hearings, the first two of which will be continuances, and we will, we'll handle those in a moment, but before we jump into the public hearing section, for those members in attendance and anyone who might not have been part or party to one of these meetings, essentially the Zoning Board of Appeals, like most city boards, flows in a certain kind of chronology. And the way we work is we will, when we get to the public hearing section, we will read the legal notice by description. And because we're using Zoom, it's, you know, we, we don't have any projectors, you know, in a room. We're not in a room together, of course, but but Andy Port will put anything and everything up on the screen so that everyone can make reference to whatever's being discussed. I will begin by opening the the public hearing for each application by simply reading the application, reading the title, the address, as well as what's being requested, whether it's an appeal, a variance, a special permit, special permit for nonconformities, at which point we will then go to hearing from the applicant. This is the portion where the applicant or the applicant's representative, attorney, architect, engineer will 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 have the floor and be able to present the application to the board. During that time, any reference to slides will be brought up by Andy. And if you're not sure, or you want to have something that's, you know, in particular, just simply ask and Andy will will call up the slide and put it up on the screen for for everyone to be able to see. After we hear from the applicant, we will then go to the section of public comment where we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard. We'll start with anyone who wishes to speak in support of the application. If you wish to speak in support of the application, I'll ask you, under the Participants window, to simply click Raise Hand, and that will indicate to Andy, who's our moderator, that you wish to be heard. He'll unmute your mic. You'll want to make sure you go to the bottom left of your Zoom screen and unmute your mic, and the floor is yours. We ask that you be, you be as clear as you can. We do ask that you state your name and your address so that so that Ms. Joy can can keep those minutes and record who's speaking and on what application. After we go through and elicit any members of the audience that wish to speak in support of an application, we then go to the other side, anyone who wishes to speak in opposition. The same thing applies, raise your hand and feel free to speak your mind. And if you're not sure whether you're on pro or con of any application, we encourage you to just simply raise your hand, it doesn't matter which side. You know, no one's keeping count or score, it's just about making sure that your voice, your thoughts and any concerns or comments are heard, and the board has the benefit of those. We then close that section of the public hearing and we go to questions from the board. And this is the section where members of the board will, in having heard possibly comments from the audience, will will reformat those comments in the form of a question of either the applicant, the applicant's representative, engineer, architect, et cetera. And we'll go through a round of questions and each member of the zoning board will have an opportunity to to ask any that they may have. After we conclude the question section, we close that portion of the public hearing and we go to deliberations. Deliberations are essentially when everyone listening gets to listen to the Zoning Board of Appeals think out loud. It's it's part of the open meeting policy and, of course, part of the spirit of these kinds of hearings that that nothing we discuss as a board is in private. It's all in public, sort of public view and fully transparent. So you will hear us discuss behind between each other what we think and whether the criteria are met or what concerns we might have. As a result of that, members of the board might have additional questions, and if they do, those questions will be popped in at that point of either the applicant or the applicant's representative. Of course, keeping in mind, there may be questions that were raised during the public comment period, which will be sort of manifest by members of the board by just them having those questions or want to repeat questions that they heard from the audience. After we go through deliberations, we will close that portion of the public hearing and we then go to the vote section. Under the Roberts Rules of Order, all of the the motions are in are made in the affirmative. Even if that's not the way the vote is actually concluded, the motion will be framed as a motion to approve. So you'll hear a member of the ZBA make a motion to approve, doesn't mean that that member's going to vote to approve, it's just how the framing of the motion has to be. That motion has to be seconded. Once it's made and seconded, we then go to the roll call. I call the roll and I move through the members of the board. They will vote yea or nay, and in order for an application to be successful, at least four members of the ZBA must vote in the affirmative. And if the motion carries, the application's approved. So that's really the flow, how it works. We'll we'll kick right into the very first one, which is a continuation from 6/9/2020. It's the Heidelneck Real Estate LLC, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman Acosta. It's 193 High Street and it is an appeal. They are requesting to continue to the meeting of 10/13/2020, which is open for them to, for us to move this to. Attorney Mead, do you wish to be heard or may we move on a, on the request?
You may move on the request, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mr. Delisle, I must recuse myself from this matter.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delisle, I actually had that note and forgot to mention that. So that means that when this application comes back on 10/13, Bud Shannon will be our voting member on that application and Mr. Delisle will be recused. So we'll just make that note and thank you, Mr. Delisle. Do we have a motion then on the applicant's request to continue to 10/13/2020?
This is Mark Moore, I'll I'll make a motion to grant the applicant request to continuance to 10/13/20, and that is case 2019-042.
I'll second it, Rachel Webb.
Okay, thank you. Motion's made by Mr. Moore and seconded by Ms. Webb, calling the roll. Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle's recused. Rachel Webb.
Yes.
Ken Swanton.
Yes.
Bud Shannon.
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes, that's five in the affirmative, the motion carries. Matter is continued to the meeting of October 13, 2020. Thank you. Moving to the next matter, also a continuation of, it's continued from the meeting of June 9, 2020, and this is a request to withdraw on the matter of Redco Construction 3 to 5 School Street. Attorney Mead, I assume you do not wish to be heard on this either?
I don't wish to be heard, the project is under construction by right and so we don't need the permit. So we'd request to withdraw without prejudice, please.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Mead. Okay, so the motion, do we have a motion from members of the ZBA to, on the applicant's request to withdraw without prejudice?
That's Mark Moore, I will make a motion to grant the request to withdraw without prejudice, the application for this project. 2020-031 and 2020-032.
Okay, do we have a second?
Bud Shannon, I'll second.
Okay, motion's made by Mr. Moore and seconded by Mr. Shannon.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think Mr. Shannon is in on this one.
Oh, you are correct.
I have returned from my refusal.
Okay. So we we just need a second from a voting member, which would be, unfortunately, everyone except poor Bud.
I can provide the second, Mr. Delisle.
Okay, so motion's made, thank you, Mr. Delisle. Motion is made by Mr. Moore and seconded by Mr. Delisle. Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle.
Yep.
Ms. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes, that is five in the affirmative, the motion carries. Matter is withdrawn without prejudice. Thank you. Okay, moving now to the first substantive hearing, which is the matter of Nadine Ritchie, 22 Monroe Street, docket 2020-047. This is a special permit for nonconformities to to construct a two-story addition to the rear resulting in an increase to pre-existing nonconforming lot coverage and side yard setback. May we hear from the applicant?
Yes, hi, this is Nadine. I guess if you wanted to bring up page 11 in your documents, is this page 11? I just wanted to show you the overall plot plan, but if you don't, if you don't have it, this should be page 13, but this this is fine if you can't get to, yeah, 11.
This is Andy Port, your Plaid Director. This is sheet 11 in the package, is there another sheet you wanted?
Yeah, I wanted to go, I think, two up, to, well, no.
That would actually be the district form.
Okay, oh, right below, keep going, the the plot plan. I was gonna, yeah, there you go, yep. I'm sorry, I had it as page 11, sorry. Okay, so basically, you know, what we're requesting is a permit for the alteration of a already a nonconforming. And what we're doing is our plan is to, this this will show you the new footprint of it and then I'll show you some upcoming elevations that kind of show you the rest of the addition. But is, the idea is to demolish a small shed roof section off of our kitchen. It's currently the kitchen that was previously approved by the Historical Commission, plus the exterior deck and make, and kind of square off that portion so it doesn't go any farther than what the deck did go. And so it's squaring off that back section that you're seeing in the red area. And as you can see, we're a half-house and the house to the side that we abut with is already, there's somebody put addition on there before some time ago and obviously we don't go beyond even where they are in their addition. So the plan, though, in that footprint is to build a two-story addition that, like I said, extends out where the deck is and squaring it off. And with just, I can go to, if you want to go to, well, I thought it was page 13, ZBA-1. There it is, yep. So this kind of shows you, the the next three just show you the various existing and proposed elevations in terms of, I don't believe there's any change other than, you can see on the left, you can actually see where the shed roof portion of the kitchen was and where the decking was, then now that will all become part of the addition. And then our proposal is to then put, obviously, an egress, we need steps to go off that, correct, into the backyard. And let's see, I think, I don't know if, if, well, I don't know if you have any other questions. These are the other elevations, there's no change to the front. The side elevation, which I can't really see, is, I forget what what that is, west. Okay, so it shows the the existing, or the proposed on top and the existing down bottom. All windows remain, you know, the same to the style of the existing house. And let's see, the next one shows the other elevations, so they're showing the rear. So we're flipping, you know, they, basically where the off, the deck was, the sliders, we're flipping that with the window and so we egress off of those sliders. The, I just want to note that we did send quite some time ago, before we actually did the Historical Commission, every abutter that we had information on, we did send and got their support. We sent all the plans that you're seeing today to basically all, the majority of abutters. And I have on file with you, which I wouldn't show everybody, but the the list of them is there with their signatures and their approval. Yeah, and there's the existing back of the house. So as you can see, it'll it'll protrude out, but obviously, there's, you can see the other side, the left side of the upper picture. And then it won't go out as far as that, I don't know how, just what the distance is, but it doesn't extend beyond that. What, that's kind of what I wanted to explain. I don't know if you have any other questions at this point, or if I should be explaining anything else that you'd like information on.
This is, this is Rob Champetti again, Ms. Ritchie, thank you for the presentation. We'll we'll move through the sequence of the hearing and members of the board may have further questions, but but I wanted to make sure that your presentation, at least for now, that you were, was that essentially it for for the moment?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so moving to the next phase of this hearing, having heard from the applicant, we'll now ask if any members of the attending public wish to speak in support of the application. And if you wish to speak in support, please just raise your hand and be sure to give your name and address for the record. Like we have Mr. Courier, Andy, if you can unmute Chris Courier's mic.
Yes, Chris, are you there?
Yes, Chairman Champetti, can you hear me?
I can, thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. My name's Chris Courier, I live at 18 Monroe Street with my wife, Michelle Spinelli. And not only am I a neighbor, but I will also be building this project, hopefully, if it gets approved. So I have to do a good job. And everyone in the neighborhood that I've spoken to is very much for the project. They don't see it as being detrimental to the neighborhood. In fact, they see it as being an enhancement. They don't see it as being detrimental to the neighborhood. In fact, they see it as being an enhancement. So thank you and we want to stay safe.
Thank you, Mr. Courier. Okay, anyone else wish to speak in support of the application? Anyone else wish to speak in support? And I'll just note for the record, we did receive letters of support. Those, Ms. Ritchie, are part of the application. So every member of the board is aware of anyone who may not be in attendance but has submitted something in writing. I know, I know you had mentioned that as well and I wanted to make sure you knew that we, we did see and we do. Anyone else wish to speak in support of the application? Okay, seeing no further hands, anyone wish to speak in opposition of the application? Seeing no hands, we will close that portion of the public hearing and move to questions from the board. We'll, we'll just move through the sequence to kind of keep the flow moving and I'll just go down the list of our, of our members. Mr. Moore, any questions for, for the applicant or any questions that you'd like to raise?
I don't have any off the top of my head at the moment.
Thank you. We can circle back if you do. Mr. Delisle?
Yeah, I just had one question with respect to the, the exterior materials for the cladding of the, of the new addition, the proposed addition. Is that going to be consistent with what's on the, the original part of the structure?
Yes, it is. I mean, Chris can even add to that, but yes, according to the specs that we've outlined, everything will be, it'll clabbered. The windows will be the same size. Yeah, it's, is that what you, is that what you wanted?
And then what, what are the, the specifications on the windows? Are they the simulated divided light windows?
No, they're not. This, this was done, this side of the building was, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
This is Chris Courier again. The, the existing windows in the house, it was renovated approximately five years ago, six years ago. And the windows have a simulated divided lighting in between the glass. So we will match those. All the trims will be light kind. We'll just be using some rot-proof materials, i.e. a Burrell trim. Looks, touches, feels all like wood. Nothing, nothing vinyl PV, I mean, nothing vinyl about it. And all paint grade materials. The siding is cedar siding. So everything will be in keeping with what's there right now.
Excellent. I, I thought when I spoke, I said simulated divided light. If I didn't, I apologize for my mistake, but that sounds good.
Yep.
Yes, I think you did. It's so, they, is that considered simulated? Yeah, okay.
Okay. Ms. Webb, any questions from you?
Sorry, no, I have none. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Swanton?
No, I too have none.
All right, I, I've got to say I don't have any, any questions either. So having moved through the questions from the board, we'll close that portion of the public hearing and now go to deliberations. Because this is a special, the request is a special permit for nonconformities, the board must find that there will be no addition of a new nonconformity in order to grant a special permit for nonconformities. And we must find that the proposed addition will not create a new nonconformity. The board must also find that the application will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing nonconforming use or structure. And when we make that finding, we must consider, or we may consider, pardon me, factors such as size, scale, massing, volume, as compared to the other structures in the neighborhood. This is under 9B2. So as we deliberate, we just, we just need to sort of tailor our deliberations around those two criteria. And we can just jump in. Whoever wishes to jump in first, feel free.
That's Mark Moore. I'll, I'll jump in first. You know, looking at the plans, the size, the scope of it over the existing deck, the fact that it had to go through the NHC and they agreed the changers were, were in concert. The house is in great shape. The plans look to me to be very reasonable. You know, despite locker coverage going up, they're, they're small lots. But given the neighborhood, given the, the direct neighbor to, to the right, I don't see, you know, because it's not creating any new nonconformity, I just can't see how this addition is any more detrimental. So, you know, I'm, I can certainly support what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Delisle?
I would agree with, with Mr. Moore. Certainly, there'll be no addition of a new nonconformity. And I think that the, based on the evidence presented by the applicant, that there will be no greater detriment to the neighborhood than what was there with the existing structure. Seems like the, the addition will be towards the back of the structure and, and very limited visibility from the, from the public way. So I think that I could support this application as well.
Great. Ms. Webb?
Yes, I agree with my colleagues. I think that this is a really good job of sort of staying within the footprint and not having any tremendous impact to the neighborhood. And the fact they have all the neighbors' support for it speaks volumes. So I'm in support of this.
Great. And Mr. Swanton?
I, I agree with my colleagues. It's, I don't see any new nonconformities. And I think it's not detrimental to the neighborhood. In fact, I think it's additions quite well done and in keeping with the house and the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Swanton. I, I have to say I agree as well. And I want to also note that the, that the Newburyport Historic Commission has already approved this project, I think, a few months ago. I'll make a final note that the office has received support letters. All of those are included. But the application does not appear to trigger this, the tree and sidewalk ordinance. So, so we do not need to address that. Do we have a motion?
This is Mark Moore. I'll make a motion to approve special permit for nonconformities for 22 Monroe Street, number 2020-047.
I'll second that.
Okay, I heard a motion to approve by Mr. Moore and a second and third by Mr. Delisle and Ms. Webb. Calling the roll on the motion to approve, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The motion carries and the application is approved. Ms. Ritchie, good luck to you and thank you.
Thank you all very, very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Courier, for your, your words as well.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the next application. This is the matter of, of John and Margaret O'Hern, care of Me Tellerman and Costa LLC, for the application address of 18 Madison Street, docket 2020-048. This is a dimensional variance to construct an accessory garage structure that does not comply with the required side yard setback. May we hear from the applicant, Attorney Mead?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And on behalf of Margaret and John O'Hern, Lisa Mead, Me Tellerman, Costa, 30 Green Street in Newburyport. As the chair noted, this property is at 18 Madison Street. And we are here for a dimensional variance to locate an accessory structure two feet from the sideline as opposed to six feet, which is required. Otherwise, the garage that's being proposed conforms to all remaining dimensional requirements. Andy, if you could move to the next slide, please? And maybe blow it up just a little bit. So this is a proposed 20 by 24 garage. The board might recall that under the accessory structure requirements of the ordinance, a person can build an accessory structure up to 22 by 24 and up to 15 feet tall. This is 14 feet, 11 and 14 inches tall, being proposed. As you can see on the site plan, there's a shed right now at the end of the driveway, which is proposed to be removed with the construction of the garage. I think what's also important, if you can see from the site plan as well, is this, we have an oddly shaped lot in two ways. One, there's like a seven-foot jog on the left-hand side of the screen, thank you, Andy, that makes the back of the lot more narrow and kind of awkward at that corner. And then the back lot line is not square, if you will, or not at a 90-degree angle as that side lot line where the garage is to be located. So if you were to move the garage away from that side lot line, it becomes closer to the rear lot line in the back. Additionally, as you can see on the plan, obviously, the garage lines up directly at the end of the driveway, which certainly is a more appropriate place for the garage. So in this instance, we have a oddly shaped lot that the applicant certainly didn't create, which is actually essentially preventing it, if you move it away from the side lot line, it starts to get a little closer to that rear lot line. It doesn't derogate from the purpose and intent of the ordinance. I think if you go down a couple of slides, Andy, I have a photo of the MIMAPs. Or substantially derogate from the neighborhood. All these little yellow dots in this wide bird's eye view are other accessory structures in the neighborhood. And as you can see, well, you can't see all of the lot lines. There are many garages that are next to, or accessory structures, large and small, next to lot lines in the general area. So Andy, if you wouldn't mind going back up to the site plan? Thank you. Interestingly, the neighbor also has an accessory structure within four feet of the side lot line as well. So the, we have an oddly shaped lot that the applicant didn't create. We have, if we attempt to move the structure over, it gets closer to the rear lot line or essentially encroaches in the backyard. It causes a more impervious area because there's going to be a turn and a further length of the impervious area on the driveway to get to the garage. It doesn't derogate from the neighborhood and is much like the neighborhood. And certainly doesn't derogate from the purpose and intent of the ordinance. The purpose and intent of the ordinance is so that you don't have structures right on top of other structures in the neighborhood. If you could back away a little bit on this plan so we can see the surrounding area. The board does have, it's a little harder to see, but the board has letters of support from the property immediately to the rear. The prop, two properties directly across the street and the property immediately to the, to the right, where the garage, they also have a garage, which is right next to the property line. Interestingly, the lot that is right next to this garage, actually, that's the back L of the lot. That lot actually faces Neptune Street. And actually, if you go back to the MIMAPs view, Andy, that's a better view of where that lot is. It's a little hard to see, but that, the house 2612, that is the house that belongs to the lot that comes up against the area. That house, that lot is an L-shaped lot that comes up against the area in the back where the garage is going to go. The applicant's taken time to make sure the garage is handsome, if you will. If you could show the elevations, Andy. So the garage will be clad garage, cedar shingle. You can see we've had it marked. Appropriate garage doors, windows that are four-over-ones. Taken some time for the detail on the garage. Again, this is back away from the streets. You won't really be able to see it. But they have taken the time to make sure it's appropriate in its design on all sides. So we believe that the applicant meets the requirements of the ordinance. We have supplied four letters of support. Again, this is an accessory structure, not quite as large as, as permitted under the ordinance. The applicant has taken the time to, to speak with its neighbors and discuss the potential of putting the garage closer to the lot line and more in line and uniform with the driveway than the lot shape would otherwise allow. And with that, we'd request the board approve the variance to locate the garage slightly closer to the lot line than the variance allows, excuse me, than the ordinance allows.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Mead. Does anyone wish to speak in support of the application? Seeing no hands, anyone wish to speak in opposition to the application? Also, seeing no hands, questions from the board? Mr. Moore, we'll start with you. Any questions for Attorney Mead?
Just one question. Was there ever a thought to have a one-car garage placed a little farther from the lot line? I would agree in a lot of respects, it, it really makes the most sense to have it there. But was there, was there ever a look at what the impact would be if it wasn't the size that's being proposed?
Yeah, the, the applicant is really looking for some storage space, obviously, for the cars. There are also very active outdoor people. They have some kayaks they need to store. So they're really looking for the two-car garage to make sure they have enough storage so as not to leave those things outside.
Thank you.
I have, I have a question. Is there a sort of standard property line offset that is required for maintenance? Because it seems like two feet would be really only for skinny people to be able to paint the side of that.
You know, could you get a ladder in there? You know, I think that would be hard. I think that, you know, you'd have to work with your neighbors on that. That's not unusual in this city, as you know. I mean, I, for example, have a house that, most of the houses on our street, you work with the neighbors to allow you to get in and do the maintenance on the side. Certainly, you can pass by the two feet for sure. But you couldn't, you couldn't put a ladder up there. But it is only 15 feet tall as well, I mean, to the mean roof. So to the edge of the, I don't know, Andy, if you can go to the elevation that has the measurements on it, to the top of the wall. Does he have a measurement on there? Nine feet, 10 inches. So you certainly could put a step ladder up there and get to the top of the night, you know, the edge of the wall. You wouldn't be able to work on the roof, but you could get to the edge of the wall.
See, I have a question. This is Ken Swanton. If Rachel, you're done?
Yes, I'm all set.
Andy, could you go back to slide two? I guess my question is about the comment that it really couldn't, it has to be this close to the wall or else you'd create a problem with the back line. Because looking at that slide, the back line is eight feet back. It can be six feet back. So if you slip, if you, if, let me just finish my question. If you slid that building over four feet, so it wasn't just two feet, but it, you know, did not require a variance to get to six feet off the line, do you have any drawings to show us what would happen to that back line? Would it, would the eight feet, looks to me, just look at this drawing, like you'd still be within your six feet. You might have to bring the building forward maybe a couple of inches. But I mean, it's, I don't quite understand why you need a variance here. It seems like a lot of area in that backyard to, to cite this garage, not quite so close to the line.
Well, I think a lot of area is certainly relative, right? So it's this Newburyport in the South End and we all live by inches. And so I, I think that the issue is the more you move the garage into the backyard, it does move closer, if you're going to keep it square with the driveway, it gets closer to that rear lot line because that rear lot line is, is tilted or angled towards the front lot line as you move north. I think that's north. And so I don't have a drawing, Mr. Swanton, at all. And there's been a lot of discussion with the neighbors and with my client about, you know, how to preserve some of the backyard and not have to have a longer driveway and have a uniform or square garage to the driveway. So those are some of the discussions that have taken place. He's looked at a number of, of different options. And this is the one that really works best without, you know, causing trouble in the backyard and kind of making odd angles of the garage in the driveway.
If I could just ask a follow-up question then. You want to preserve some of the backyard. I'm trying to figure out how wide that backyard is. That back lot line, trying to study Andy's plan, it looks like it's 67-point-something feet. So, and this garage is going to take 20 plus two of it. If it took, if it took 20 plus six of it, you still have 41 feet of width in your backyard. I mean, I, I guess I'm coming back around to, a variance to me is, is when you're really, you're stuck and you can't do anything. I don't see why you're stuck here.
Well, you know, I disagree that the applicant is requesting that it be able to line up the garage with the driveway and not have to put more pavement or pavers or, or driveway through the yard to get to the garage at an angle. And to move it over and then move it closer in the backyard of the Ms. Porter's on Neptune Street. Street. So I understand that there are certainly very strict requirements for variances. We have an odd shaped lot here in more than one way. And so we have houses, older houses that are placed on lots that make for awkward situations. And sometimes we have equitable relief as well as legal relief. And I guess in this instance, I would suggest to you that in addition to actually meeting some of the, the requirements for variance from an equitable point of view and the use of this property, this would be the most efficient and appropriate way to allow the garage to be built.
That's it for my questions.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, so this is Mr. Delisle. I guess just sort of following up on Mr. Swanton's line of questioning. If that's the case, then isn't that a special privilege here that you're being, that you're requesting that this be treated inconsistently with the way that all other lots are treated?
I don't think so. It's, so the question is, is there a special privilege within the area? And I would suggest to you, I mean, all you have to do is look at this plan to see that that's not the case. You have a garage right in front of it that's four feet off the lot line. And so I don't think it's a special privilege and certainly the neighbors don't think it's a special privilege. There, they have an awkwardly shaped lot, both by that seven foot jog that they didn't create as well as that rear lot line that's not, it's not a straight lot line. There's not 90 degrees on those corners. They didn't create it. And they're asking to have some relief to be able to locate a garage in a more appropriate location at the end of a driveway. So I don't think it's a special privilege. I think that it meets the, the tenants of the, of the ordinance and the applicant's requesting the approval of variance.
Okay. Any other questions? Was, I, I didn't want to short circuit any further questions that any members might still have, but was there anyone that had any further questions for Attorney Mead?
I have a question. I have a question. Attorney Mead, I'm wondering if you, I saw that you surveyed the neighborhood for accessory structures, but did you look at how many one car garages there are as opposed to two car garages?
No. Yeah, no. Ms. Webb, I did not do that.
Attorney Mead, this is Mr. Delisle once again. Following up on Ms. Webb's question, does your survey indicate which of those accessory structures were predate the, the ordinance and are non-conforming structures or, or required a variance?
Oh, I, no, I absolutely didn't do that. I, I certainly didn't do that. I looked at what other accessory structures were in the general neighborhood and where they were located. But I certainly didn't do a review on every single one of them to find out whether they were there by variance or by pre-existing non-conformity.
Thank you.
All right. Any, any further questions from the board? Okay. I'd like to go ahead and move to, close that portion of the public hearing and move into deliberations. Now, again, because this is a dimensional variance, as the board well knows, the criteria, four dimensional variance, the standard of variance criteria are listed in the, the office, the staff report that's provided to us and available to the public. But the, the criteria are the following four, that the conditions and circumstances are unique to the applicant's lot, structure or building and do not apply to the neighborhood land structures or buildings in that same district. That strict application of the provisions of the chapter would deprive the applicant of reasonable use of the lot, structure or building in a manner equivalent to the use permitted to be made by other owners in the neighbor, in, in their neighboring lands, structure or building in the same district. Number three, that the unique condition and circumstances are not the result of actions of the applicant taken subsequent to the adoption of zoning in Newburyport. And finally, four, that the relief will not constitute a grant of a special privilege inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties in that, in the zoning district. Do we, who wishes to kick off deliberations along that criteria? We'll start with Mr. Moore.
Well, I'm struggling with a couple of, of the bullet points. On one hand, there are a lot of structures that appear to be from the naked eye, close to lot lines. So it, just kind of eyeballing it from the sky, it, it doesn't look like you're granting a special privilege by allowing this to be so close there when the other sides are conforming. I also don't think it's unreasonable to want to have a garage, you know, proposed garage there lined up with your driveway and maximizing the backyard. But I'm struggling with the, with the need versus the want on not being able to have a structure that doesn't require a variant. So that's kind of where I am right now.
Okay. Mr. Delisle.
Similar to Mr. Moore, I, I am struggling with a couple of these bullet points also. I understand the desire of the applicant to have the, the two car garage and the storage space for their, their sporting equipment. That is very sensible and certainly I can understand that. I just don't know if that is, as Mr. Moore called it, the want versus the need is, is sufficient to get us over what we all recognize here is a very high bar.
Okay. Ms., Ms. Webb?
I too am looking at these bullet points and looking at the plot plan. And although the lot does have that irregular shape on the left side, I'm not sure it really impacts the location of the garage to any extent. So I don't know that I feel comfortable saying that, or agreeing that the lot is a unique shape that we could hang our hat on for granting this variance. Other than that, I do, I agree with my colleagues about the need versus the want question and wonder, you know, how many other two car garages are really in that neighborhood? I tend to think of the South End as being much tighter and I think it's pretty rare to see a two car garage. But they do have the lot size to accommodate it and it's just their choice that they're choosing to seek this dimensional variance to get closer to the side yard lot line. So again, it's kind of a need versus a want question.
Okay. And Mr. Swanton?
I agree with all three of my colleagues about the need versus want. As I said during the questioning, if the applicant had showed how bad it would be to put this garage four feet off the line, what it would really do, I could be a lot more convinced, but it sure looks like to me it could be done. So I don't, you know, not seeing any evidence to the contrary, I don't see why we jump through the hurdle of creating a variance for this when it doesn't look like to me it's, it's, there's a reason for one.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Attorney Mead.
I'd like to know if I could continue this matter so I can have an opportunity to speak with my clients about it before the board renders a decision?
Of course. We'll, we will suspend further deliberations on the applicant's request and we can consider a motion to continue to, how, how much time would you, would you be looking for?
Your next meeting would be fine. Thank you.
That's the meeting of, is that August 11th, Andy?
Yes, it is, I think.
It is, yep.
That's, that meeting, I'm actually going to be absent, so I just need to note that. I wouldn't be available on August 11th.
Okay, thank you. But we have, Walter will be available, I think, perhaps, maybe.
Yes.
But, but you'll be in, you'll be in August 11th.
I'll be there.
Excellent. Okay, so do we have a motion then to, we have a motion on the applicant's request to continue this application until the meeting of August 11th?
I'll make the motion to continue the meeting of applicant, application 2020-04818 Madison Street to the meeting of August 11th.
I'll second Mr. Moore.
Okay, motions made by Ms. Webb and seconded by Mr. Moore. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yeah.
Mr., Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Rob Chimpetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative the motion carries and the application is continued at the applicant's request to the meeting of August 11th. Thank you very much, Attorney Mead. And moving now to the next application, it's MFG Ventures, Fort Hart Road. The docket number is 2020-049. This is a special permit for non-conformities to construct a new home partially on a pre-existing non-conforming footprint. May we hear from the applicant?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Can you hear me okay?
I can, thank you.
Excellent. This is Brayden Monaco. I am one of the partners from MFG Ventures LLC. We are looking for a special permit for non-conformities for obviously the front yard setback and then that will, will turn into an upward extension as well. As you can see, the property currently sits at Fort Hart Road. It currently sits about 21 feet off of the property line. Our goal in this extension, we are looking to obviously take the existing single story ranch sitting at about 920 square feet and create a larger structure, two car garage of a two-story home, maintaining a single family as it is today. But it is sitting about 21 feet off the street. We look to create an overhang on the front of the house by about two feet, in the back of the house by about two feet to try to gain a little bit more of an internal footprint because the foundation is fairly small and that being on such a large lot at about a 14,000 square foot lot. So the, the variance currently, or the front yard setback currently sits, like I said, 21 feet. We will be at about 18.9. So obviously extending a little bit further into that front yard setback. Some notes that we just kind of pulled as we were going through, I did provide a aerial view of the, of Hart Road as well on slide 10. That, that aerial view basically shows the setbacks of each house off the property line on the street to a scale based on what we have with our home. And on average, Fort Hart Road currently sits further off the street than the majority of the homes and at about an 18.9 footprint moving forward, we will be right in line with both of our two neighbors as well as many of the other homes on the street. So I don't think anything detrimental there in regards to extruding into, close to the street than what is normally seen on Hart Road currently. As it stands for other dimensional controls, we will be within all other dimensional controls. Other side yards, rear setbacks and height restrictions are all well under the current required dimensional controls for the property. We look to create a beautiful home. We have spoken with many of the neighbors. There's about six letters that we provided for you all from folks on the street. We did make an attempt to talk to as many neighbors as possible. Some, some things to note on the property itself, it is currently owned by Derek and Katrina Salca. We do have a purchase and sale agreement on this home to close to, for the purchase by MFG Ventures as of August 24th. So with that being said, one of the new neighbors, Katrina and Derek Salca are going to be moving from Fort Hart Road to Six Hart Road. One of the letters comes from them as well as the direct neighbor at Two Hart Road as well. So, you know, at this time, we are looking for the board's approval to construct, you know, increase the footprint of this home on a lot that can certainly handle the size and scope of the project. We do not believe that based on what we are doing, it is any different than other projects that are going around, going up in neighborhoods around here. And like we said, we spoke with many of the neighbors and got, and got verbal approvals from many as well as written approval from Six currently. A couple of things to note as well on the height, obviously we're taking a single story ranch and building a two-story home. But you will note that the house next door, you know, at Two Hart Road sits at about 28 feet tall. Ours will sit at about 30 at the ridge or I believe at 26 at mid roof, mid ridge. So I think we've tried to, you know, keep some character to the home, try to build something that will be desirable and only increase the value of homes around it and, and, and also bring some aesthetic appeal to the neighborhood. Other than that, you know, we, again, sitting within all the other dimensional controls and everything else looks to be in order there.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Monaco. Does anyone wish to speak in support of the application? Note that the board has received letters of support, which are now part of our, our package in our record. Anyone in attendance wish to speak in support? Seeing no hands, anyone wish to speak in opposition? Also seeing no hands, we'll close that portion of the public hearing and go to questions from the board. We'll start with Mr. Moore, if you have any questions.
I have none at the moment.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Mr. Delisle, can, do you have any questions? We'll, we'll, we'll circle back. Ms. Webb?
No, I'm just looking at the staff report with the comment about the location being in the Water Resource Protection District.
Yes, I can speak to that. If you, Andy, if you can go to the plot plan, if you don't mind. Doesn't specifically show it on the plot plan itself, but if you see that the, if you're looking at the plot plan, if you have it in front of you, you'll see that it's virtually a giant L. The water district sits and breaks at just about where that jog goes out the backyard. So right down that middle there is kind of where it falls into zone two. With that being said, we're, you know, we're at any point in time from a construction standpoint, a good 50, you know, 45 to 55 feet away from that zone. There'll be no disruption to earth in that backyard. All construction will be coming off the side of the property, on the right side of the property. So we understand that there's a, that restriction on the back end of the property.
This is Andy Port, the Director of Plan and Development. So there are, although there's, we put that in the staff report to provide notice to the board of whatever zoning districts are applicable, there aren't really any implications for this particular project as a result of the back prop, portion of the property falling within the Water Resource District.
Thanks, Andy.
Okay, thank you, Andy. Anything further, Ms. Webb?
No, that's it.
All right. Mr. Swanton?
No, I have no questions on this one.
All right. I, I don't have any questions either. We can close that portion of the public hearing and go into deliberations. Now, because this is a special permit for non-con, non-conformities, just like the last application, the board must find that there will be no addition of a new non-conformity in order to grant this special permit for non-conformity and that the proposed addition will not create a new non-conformity. The board must also find that the application will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing non-conforming user structure. And when we make that determination, we may consider factors such as size, scale, massing and volume as compared to the other structures in the neighborhood. This is under 9B2. So moving into deliberations, we'll start with Mr. Moore.
Well, to start out, you know, it doesn't create any new non-conformity. So, you know, we move on to what I thought when I first saw the proposal and some of the numbers, moving from a square foot of 900 and change to, and we'll say 2,900 to round up a little bit, that there might be an issue with size, scale, massing, volume compared to other structures. But having checked out the neighborhood and, and looked at direct abutters plus the, the different styles up and down the street.
different styles up and down the street and the size of the lot itself, I don't see a problem with this design at all. In fact, you know, I think it will be an enhancement to the neighborhood, so I can support this.
Okay. Any further deliberations? I doubt, I'd agree with my co, with my colleagues as well, and I have no problems with this, this application. I feel like the applicant has met the criteria as well. Do we have a motion to approve?
This is Mr. Moore. I'll make a motion to approve special permit for nonconformities for Hart Road, file number 2020-049.
I'll second it.
I'll second that.
I'm going to give this one to Ms. Webb, the second. Motion's made by Mr. Moore and seconded by Ms. Webb. All those in favor, please just respond by saying aye or nay. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Delisle?
Aye.
Ms. Webb?
Aye.
Mr. Swanton?
Aye.
And Rob Champetti, I vote aye. That is five in the affirmative the ayes have it, the motion carries and the application is approved. Good luck. Good luck to you, Mr. Monaco, and thank you for, for the presentation.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Good. Have a great night. Moving to the last application that's on our agenda this evening, it's the application of Jennifer and Hunter Flynn care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tullman and Costa LLC for the property located at 44 High Street, docket 2020-040, sorry, 050. This is a special permit for nonconformities to remove a rear one-story section of a single-family residence and construct a two-story addition. Attorney Mead?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, on behalf of my applicants, Jennifer and Hunter Flynn. I am here this evening with Matt Langus of Scott Brown Architects, and we're here to talk about special permit for nonconformities for 44 High Street. Andy, if you could pull up the presentation. While he's doing that, the property is a pre-existing nonconforming for lot area, frontage, and lot coverage. It is in the R2 zoning district, which requires a lot size of 10,000 square feet, 90 feet of frontage. We have 73, just over 7,300 square feet and 50 feet of frontage. Lot coverage is nonconforming at 27.8 where the maximum allowed is 25. And we have pre-existing nonconforming front setback and both side yard setbacks as well. So the height, the rear yard setback and open space are all, and parking are all in compliance. We did go see the historic commission on this and receive their roofline approval, if you go to the next slide, Andy, change for roofline approval, excuse me, approval for roofline change at their July 9th, 2020 meeting. This is in the DCOD, however, less than 25% of the exterior walls are being removed. Obviously, this house is on High Street. It's the second house down on the northern side from Braunfield Street and as you travel west. And the house is historical. They did declare it historically significant, but approved the plans for the renovation. So what we're proposing, and I'll have Matt go through this in a second, is there's a one-story addition that's located on the rear of the house. One is a newer section of the addition, one is an older section. The proposal is to remove that one-story addition and construct another addition, which is actually two stories and just a little bit bigger than the existing footprint of the current addition. The existing side yard setback is five feet. This addition's going to go to 6.9, so it won't go all the way out to the existing side yard setback. And we do increase the lot coverage a little bit by 1.7% and take it to 29.5, and that's because the added square footage on the addition. And the western yard, side yard, and the rear set, yet setbacks will all comply. So if you want to go to the next slide, Andy, if you could just blow that up a little bit. So what you see in the kind of shaded lines is the existing footprint. And then you can see the area where it says proposed addition in the heavier black lines and proposed landing, that's the new addition. So the shaded lines underneath are the existing footprint and the heavier black lines are the proposed footprint. And just to give you an idea of where this is, if you could go to the next slide, Andy. So here, this is right at March's Hill, the top of Braunfield Street, and the lot in yellow is the 44 High Street. We have letters of support from those abutters that are touched by this property. So the one at 42 High Street, which is at the corner of Braunfield and High, and the one directly behind it at 90, I think it's 92 Braunfield, and the one directly behind that at 90 Braunfield. So all of those people have provided letters of support. But you can see in this, in this picture, the addition is smack dab in the back and it cannot be seen from any of the public views, either from Braunfield Street because of the locations of the, of the garage in the building next door, or from High Street because of how close the building is to the house at the corner of Braunfield Street. So with that, if you go to the next plan, I'm going to turn it over to Matt, and he's going to tell you a little bit about what we're going to do. This was a picture, this was a plan, just, I don't know how many times you, the board gets to see these, but this is how you determine how many square feet are actually being removed in order to have Jennifer be able to verify you're removing less than 25%. But the area that says 165 square feet, that's the current addition. It's got a little, you can see the windows on the side, that's also coming off. So that's what's coming off. And then if you go to the next plan, I'm going to turn it over to Matt.
Thank you, Attorney Mead. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is the chairman and members of the board, Matt Langus, 38 Madison Street, ain't sorry for the record, Scott Brown Architects. So at the beginning of this, we actually started out our design process using the existing foundation and working to add a second floor. But after some development, we noticed that the existing foundation at the older addition was not in great shape. So in addition to that, there is a very little access, if not no access virtually, to any of the plumbing and utilities that are underneath that existing floor. So with that new information, we decided it would be a good opportunity to rebuild it, but rebuild it properly. We also expanded the footprint slightly, and that includes the continuation of the face of the main box of the home, which is located on the right elevation, which allowed for much better functionality of the space on the interior. But at the, at the same time, we're making sure to maintain the existing character of the home using, with the new addition by using the same materials, trim and siding. So as you can see on page seven, that is A2.1 with the right and left elevation shown at the bottom of the page. The red dash lines highlight the existing portion of the home that will be maintained, as well as the new addition, which is indicated on the addition and the existing lines above and below all those elevations. It's a sort of a quick portion of the presentation at my point, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are.
Thank you, Matt. I, I think one of the important things, and I think what the historic commission noted too, you'll see that that, the eve on, or the ridge on the addition is lower, of course, than the historic home, which leads to it not being able to be seen also from High Street. And it's certainly tucked in behind and does not damage the historic structure. So with that, we go on to the criteria for the modification to a pre-existing nonconforming single-family home. One, there won't be any addition of a new nonconformity, and in this instance, there will not be. Indeed, we don't even carry the existing five-foot setback. We bring it back to 6.9. And then the next is the proposed change will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing nonconforming structure. So as I noted earlier, we create no new con, nonconformities. We extend the side yard, but it doesn't go out to the same nonconforming setback that it is. It's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the nonconforming structures exist today. It, this addition is the same shape as existing footprint, albeit a little bit larger. The increase in lot coverage is slight at 1.7% reflecting this slightly expanded footprint. The proposed rear yard setback is 103.3 still, obviously far exceeding the requirement of 25. Many neighbors in the, many properties in the neighborhood, and actually, Andy, if you could go back to the MyMaps or the Google Earth, whatever we use there, you can see there's a lot of these structures in the back in the area that have some additions on the back. Down at the corner of Parsons Street, you'll see one. Certainly immediately next door, you see one. And as you go down Braunfield Street, there's a couple of additions that build out back. So it's certainly not, not unusual in the neighborhood. And given the size of the lot and the size of the house, the massing and style of the addition are appropriate for the building in the same neighborhood. And as I noted earlier, we've provided three letters of support from those neighbors that are the most close to this particular house at 44 High Street. So with that, we'd request the board approve a special permit for nonconformities and allow the Flins to put an addition on the rear of their house.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Mead. Going to the public part of the hearing, anyone wish to speak in support of the application? See, seeing no hands. Anyone wish to speak in opposition to the application? Also seeing no hands. We'll close that portion of the public hearing and go to questions from the board. We'll start with Mr. Moore. Any questions for, for Attorney Mead or Mr. Brown?
Not the one Mr. Brown covered it with same materials, trim and siding comments when they know they were going to be in line with the historic commission. So he pretty much covered that for me, so.
Great. Mr. Delisle?
I had just one very minor question, more of, just to satisfy my own curiosity. Attorney Mead, when you, when you looked at the, at the MyMap slide and you pointed out two of the three neighbors providing the letter of support for the project, I was just curious as to the third. I think you, you, you pointed out the two on the corner of Braunfield.
Yeah, sure. There's one immediately adjacent at 44, which is at the corner, excuse me, at 42, was at the corner of Braunfield and High. And then one immediately behind that, which is at 92 Braunfield, and the one immediately behind that at 90 Braunfield.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Let's see. Ms. Webb?
No, I don't have any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Swanton.
No, I think it's a very good presentation. I have no questions.
Yeah, I agree. And I don't have anything further to, to add. So we can close that portion of the public hearing and move right into deliberations. Because it's a special permit for nonconformities, the board will just render its deliberations around the 9B2 criteria that I've read previously. And with that, why don't we kick off with Mr. Moore?
Well, given the criteria we need to look at, we all know we're not creating any new nonconformities and improving one slightly. And then, so what's the next we look at? Is it more detrimental to the neighborhood than a pre-existing nonconforming? And given that, as we've learned from the plans and, you know, hearing from the design, the designer architect, the materials, trim and siding will be the same. It's been approved by historic commission. There were no objections then from the public. It's a modest increase to footprint, but almost had to be done given the condition of, of the existing foundation. Can't be seen from the street. And then letters of support, support from immediate abutters, I don't see how it could be substantially more detrimental. So I can support this for those reasons.
Okay. Mr. Delisle?
I would agree with Mr. Moore. The presentation was good. The, Mr. Langus's plans explained the, the scope of the new addition, and it, you know, appears that it won't be visible from the public way. And I'm completely comfortable with the increase in the lot coverage. And as to the, the criteria, as Mr. Moore said, there's no new nonconformity, and this does not appear to be in any way, shape or form more detrimental to the neighborhood than what was there previously. So I can support this as well.
Okay. Was, I, I basically have nothing further to add. I think everyone has, has aptly summed it up, so I, I don't have any further comments to add to deliberations. So we can close that portion of the public hearing. And could I have a motion to approve?
This is Mr. Delisle. I'll move to approve the application for a special permit for nonconformities for 44 High Street, file number 2020-50.
Mr. Moore will second.
Okay, Mr. Delisle's motion, Mr. Moore's seconded, calling the roll. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yeah.
Ms. Webb?
She seemed to have dropped off.
All right. We'll press pause on that for a second.
You may be back with us, Chair. Hang on just one more.
There she is. There she is. Yes, yes. Sorry, I've had connectivity issues. Yes, I vote in the affirmative.
Okay. And Mr. Swanton?
Yeah, that's, that's a good plan. I vote in affirmative.
All right. And Rob Champetti, I vote yes as well. That's five in the affirmative the motion carries and the application's approved. Attorney Mead and Mr. Brown, thank you very much. Members of the board, thank you as well. Having concluded the docket of the ZOAA Board of Appeals' agenda, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All right. Motion's made and seconded. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yeah.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's six in the affirmative. The motion carries and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much for, for participation. Andy, Caitlin and Gretchen, thank you guys. And everyone have a safe rest of the week.
You too. Nice work, everybody. Thanks.